County Commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda would be the Board of Adjustment Report. Ms. Amy Kelly.
Before Ms. Kelly proceeds, Commissioner, I just want to let the public know I added copies of Pan's report and of mosquito controls, the proposal he had. They're in the back, so if anybody wants a copy of those. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
See, this morning we have a recommended approval. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request for a variance to construct a house 1,800 square feet, 15 feet into the front setback on Lot 3, Block 2, Sun and Sands, Unit 1, 614 Mariner Circle, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for Mark Corb. That house falls in line with the neighboring properties. They're trying to save some beautiful oak trees in the area. And there's a house on the eastern side and the western side, and this house is going to fall right in line with those two houses. So it doesn't offset the look of the neighborhood any by changing how it looks.
I was wondering, Amy, what, you know, it shows they got plenty of property, but then they want to go forward into the setback. So I was wondering why that was. So that was going to be one of my questions.
There's a lot of beautiful, like, Spanish-looking oaks. I don't know if they're Spanish oaks.
That's those maritime oaks.
Yep.
And the same way with the other two properties?
Yes.
Is that reason they're set up where they don't have to tailor those oaks? So it's like a ridge runs down through there?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure if I put the pictures in there. I'd have to look for the pictures.
No, I didn't.
But there's quite a few beautiful oaks in there. As you can see, this is the house to the northwest, and there's a lot of oak trees in the area, and the house is set farther in the front, as well as the southeastern property. The house is set closer, and you can see all the Spanish, well, the maritime oak trees that are in that area.
Pleasure to the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
Just another point of procedure with our new policy, technically all of these Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning issues are quasi-judicial hearings, so you would need to call for public comment before action is taken by the Board on each one of these items.
Okay. Public comment?
Take my motion back until we have public comment.
Public comment on this issue. There being no public comment, pleasure to the Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Also, with the Advisory Board of Adjustment, we have a few vacancies. Seat number five is vacant. Gil Altri did hold that seat, but he stated that he would like to be an alternate because he doesn't feel like he can give his time to a full-time position.
Is that why you have him listed as alternate one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we are looking for an alternate two and a vacant seat number five. At this time, it appears that Mr. Massey has an alternate position that's available. All the, Ms. Sanders, she has two. Commissioner Jones has one. Commissioner Lockley has one, and Commissioner Harris has one. So we would like somebody to represent for your district if you can locate someone.
I have one available.
And this is for the Board of Adjustments.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll look, see if I can fill that position.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Just another clarification. Mr. Melander's not in my district anymore. He's in Commissioner Matthews' district.
Okay.
He lives out there. Just before we get to him and meet you. But Mr. Joe Hambrug.
Okay. I'll make that change. And that is all of the Board of Adjustments. We'll head to the Planning and Zoning. Okay. Let me find it. There it is. There we go. This morning, we have two docs. The first one is a recommendation for approval. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family private dock located at 698 Alligator Drive, also known as Lot 14, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed walkway would be 78 feet by 4 feet wide, total of 312 square feet, a 20-foot by 6-foot terminus, that's 120 square feet. Customer is exempt from DEP and the Corps of Engineers permitting. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Services, agent for Douglas and Catherine Whelan. There is a house on the property, and this is just past the Mariner's Circle area.
There's a lot of Martian stuff in there, Amy.
Yes, yes.
That's not going to be disturbed, is it?
It doesn't appear. This dock here is in line, basically, around about same footprint of the northwestern lot. So I don't believe any of the Marshes, they're just going to go into the shoreline, it appears.
It's a little bit longer than that other dock next to it, isn't it?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am.
By how much?
I did not measure the neighboring dock. It appears that it's not by much. I didn't measure the neighboring dock.
Out in that area, you don't have many docks, and that's what my concern is. I want to be, I want it to be limited, and I really don't want it to stick out no more, you know, no farther than the other ones that it, but I understand they do have to get it out in navigable water. But in that area, you've got, like I said, a lot of the marsh, a lot of the, and that is Alligator Harbor, and they do the oysters and the clams in that harbor, so we need to be very mindful of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Go up to your next slide. Up, up, I mean, down, I guess you would say. One more. Right there. Up at the top it says, "Proposed pier." Now, is this a dock or a pier?
It was submitted.
Pier? So there'll be no more into it?
There should not be a more into it.
Okay. Just, it's being proposed as a dock, and then I look up there and I see proposed pier.
It's definitely a pier.
It's definitely a pier.
To answer Cheryl's question, the reason we came out a little bit more is because there's a mud flap that comes up from there.
Yeah, I saw.
And for the cash canoes, obviously, you don't want to get them in the mud, so.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that area. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying. Be very mindful of this in the future to make sure that we do accommodate the homeowner, the property owner, but also keep very mindful of Alligator Harbor and its benefits out there in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? And I'm just leaving you with a word of wisdom, hopefully.
Let's say it's a pier, so there'll be no more, there won't be any scoring of the grass beds and all that.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about.
Pleasure to the Board?
Public comment.
A public comment, excuse me. Any public comment on this issue? Please come forward, state your name for the record. There being no public comment, pleasure to the Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Amy.
Thank you. I have some more.
Okay.
Thank you. We also have a recommended approval contingent upon reviewing the 25-foot setback from the riparian lines. It was a unanimous vote. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family private dock located at 881 West Bayshore Drive, also known as Lot 1, Block 71, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed walkway will be 4 foot wide by 40 foot, 44 foot long, 179 square feet, and an 8-foot by 20-foot, 160-square-foot terminal platform, and a 8-foot by 5-foot, 40-square-foot step-down, and a 20-foot by 40-foot, 800-square-foot covered boat lift. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Services, agent for Carrie Williams, and it has a house. This has already been constructed. It's not fully finished. There is a stop work order placed on this job. The contractor will be going before the Construction Industry Licensing Board. This is the second time in a year that he went ahead without a permit and caused a little bit of conflict. After reviewing it, I'll show you the dock. It lays right here at the corner of Regatta Park on St. George Island, and it's not a brand-new dock. They're making some modifications to an existing dock. All of the area in blue is modified, and I'm going to skip. This is what it will look like. The 44-foot by 4-foot wide dock is going to dog gear to the west and have the 8-foot by 20-foot terminal platform with the step-down, and then a 20-by-40-foot covered boat lift. During the meeting, we recognized that it did not meet a 25-foot setback off the riparian right line on the western side. So the applicant did get a professional survey of the, they did the lot-line methodology where they extended from the lot-line straight out. At the shortest point, it's 12.07 feet from the property line, as measured by the methodology that they use from lot-line extension. After we discussed it upon staff, it's our recommendation to require the applicant for a professional survey, which they did, indicating the riparian right lines had not been encroached upon, and to not petition the DEP permit that DEP had approved. The applicant did receive the professional survey, and it appears that the closest point is 12.07 feet to the property line, lot-line extension methodology. The dock ordinance reads that applications for dock or pier permit must contain a survey from a professional surveyor which indicates riparian rights unless the dock is filled at least 25 feet from existing property lines. So they did submit the professional survey, indicating that they did not encroach over the line, however, they are within it. So it's the pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have spoken with Amy Markcurrenton, Amy several times, actually, about this particular deal, and I understand, I might be inaccurate, but I think that they dog-eared it to the left because of the depth of water on that bayside of St. George Island. And I'm satisfied with their recommendation to go ahead. I know it was all kind of done after the fact, which I'm still not good with, but I'm okay with enough to approve it today, so I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I think we're supposed to do public comment?
Yes.
Before the Board takes action.
Is it still not too late to do public comment? You can still have the motion to second, but you need public comment before the Board takes action.
You have, oh.
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is this the appropriate time to ask it? Proposed covered boat lift. Do we, what's in the ordinance for the docks and the piers and all like that? Because at one time, I know down in Alligator Point, we don't let them do the covers on it. We don't, you know, we don't recommend the covers, but they do the covers. So is this going to be covered or not covered?
That it will be covered.
And we do have a rule that allows them to have a covered boat lift there?
It's an all-weather rule.
But ours to the east is not covered.
There's nothing in the ordinance that I found that...
I know. We specify that to the east because of the problems we have in that area. But anyway, that's why I was asking.
We do need a public comment. Any public comment on this issue? Please come forward, state your name for the record. There being no public comment on this proposed boat house, pleasure to the Board, and we don't have a motion and a second in place. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Again, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have some vacancies. Right now, we have an at-large seat three that's vacant, real estate seat five that's vacant, seafood dealer seat eight that's vacant, science seat nine is vacant, and alternate seat two that's vacant. Calculating the districts and everything, it looks like Commissioner Jones has one, Commissioner Sanders has two, Commissioner Massey has one, Commissioner Parrish has one, and Commissioner Lockley has a seat. We're going to look, this is our planning and zoning members. Mr. Paul Regelmeier is in Commissioner Jones' district. John Murphy appears to be in Ms. Cheryl Sanders' district. Seat three's vacant, and at-large, and Ms. Cheryl, Skip Frank, he is in your district, Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah.
Okay. That's for sure. And then we have a real estate vacancy. Forestry, Mr. Noah Lockley, Joey Toronto. Seafood worker, TJ Ward, is in Commissioner Parrish's district. Then we have seafood dealer that's vacant, science that's vacant, and then Mr. Jerry Jackson that is in Mr. William Massey. He is alternate seat one. And then we have alternate seat two that's vacant. So we are looking for some new members to be placed on the Board. There are a few months that we couldn't get a forum. You know, we have six people. If we have two people that are gone, then we can't have a forum. It takes five on the planning and zoning.
I'd like the Board, someone to make a motion for the county to put this in the newspaper, that we have all these seats available, to see if there's any applicants out there that would be willing to serve.
So moved.
Not only on the P and Z, but on the Board of Adjustments also. Michael?
Yes, sir.
And we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, so that we can try to fill some of these seats to help obtain a forum. Do we need to take public comment on this, Mr. Chairman?
Was this published on the agenda?
Yeah.
It was? Okay. Then no public comments necessary. This is not a quasi-judicial action.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Michael, I have a lady here today.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you want me to read it out.
Yeah, why are we in it? Can you take care of it?
I'll say, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be to complete this action by voting and then proceed with Mr. Merrill.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I have nine Commissioners on my report. I approve the Board that Commissioner Massey has found a possible candidate for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Nancy Deal, she's here in the audience today. Mrs. Deal lives on River Road and is very interested in the planning and zoning process, as she is in the process of requesting a dock permit herself. This deal is under September Planning and Zoning Agenda. I will ask Ms. Deal to meet with Ms. Amy Ham Kelly, the County Zoning Administrator, to discuss the role of a Planning and Zoning Commission member. Once Ms. Deal completes her permit request process, I will bring her appointment request to the Board. So that'll be possibly one of your seats.
Okay. I need to make a motion on that.
No, sir. Not right now, Mr. Massey.
Okay.
Let her finish the process of application.
I have one more item. In our fee schedule resolution, we're requesting one change in that. Nothing has changed at this time, other than in our supplemental permits. Here lately, we are having an inundation of power pole permits on vacant lots. That's pulling up, and we're having to do dilation letters. Actually, I have two more items. But in order for this to be rectified, we're asking the Board to allow us to add one more supplemental permit. Right now, we have electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and roofing, and that, they're each $50 apiece. We're asking for a temporary power pole to, as a supplemental permit to a new construction, permit for houses and modulars and different things, so that they can have a power pole inspected, and we know where all these temporary power poles are going, what they're used for. So we're asking to have one more supplemental permit. It's a $50 additional cost to a permit. However, I believe it would cut down on the number of power poles to vacant lots for RV use.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I have one more item. It's basically a list of July violations and complaints that have come in. In District 1 and Commissioner Jones' district, we have a rock replacement replacement that has been done without a permit at 705 Buck Street, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. I did discuss this with DEP, and according to DEP's field compliance officer, a replacement repair is allowable, and so the only violation is that the owner did not pull a permit. So the owner will be notified that they will be requiring a permit, and it will be a double fee on their permits. Also, there's an RV violation at 31 Washington Street, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. At this time, that one has been resolved. There is an RV power pole violation at 325 Old Ferry Dock Road, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. I did send a certified mail to the owner. It was returned to our office. The owner does have a permit in our office that will be, it's ready for pickup for a new construction house. So owner builders have up to 18 months where they can live in their RV while they're actively under construction with their home. And he, it has been approved in the office. He just hasn't pulled that permit yet. Four, there's multiple RV violations at 469 Avenue A, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. I have sent out a certified letter to the owner. It has not been returned, but no one has made any attempt to contact our office. Five, multiple RV violations at 29 Bull Street, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. At this point, the owner of the property states that he rents out it, the property daily, weekly, monthly, and so I did send him an email, not email, but a certified letter. He's making no attempt, so I have turned that over to our county attorney. We have another RV violation, 306 Tallahassee Street, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. The property owner has been out of town. She asked for an extension. Today is the deadline for her extension to reach out to us. I'll be contacting her, asking her if she's made any movement on this violation. In District 2, Commissioner Cheryl Sanders' district, number seven, there is flooding due to excessive fill at 602 Mariner Circle, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. I've contacted Ben Withers. He's the contractor of record on the job. He said that they are doing some remediation work on this. However, it is flooding the neighbor that has not had any, oh, I'm sorry, has not had any excessive flooding in the past. He states that there is roughly 20 loads of dirt that was placed on that property. So we'll make the opportunity tomorrow to drive out there, take pictures, and at that point, we'll contact the owner of the property and the contractor to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, has a site permit been issued?
Yes, ma'am.
It has?
But that only allows the property to be cleared for construction purposes, not fill of the property.
That's right. That's what I was wanting to know. So they...
So it's in violation of the permit?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
It went beyond the permit scope.
Yeah. Yes, that's what I'm saying.
And I do have pictures that the owner of the property neighboring sent over to me, and he does have excessive flooding, so...
Okay. Because, you know what? The rule reads you cannot push your water on somebody else's property. That is, you can't do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Top of the board.
And then...
Blow them out. I'm sorry.
And then in District 5, Commissioner William Massey's, number eight, there was multiple RV violation at 2752 U.S. Highway 98 West, Carabel, Franklin County, Florida. The owner has contacted me concerning this violation and has stated that the connections to water, septic, and power have been disconnected, that they are storing on the property, but they're not in use. So that's what we have at the moment. They are allowed to store on the property. They're just not allowed to actively use them on their properties.
In the, can I ask you? In the run of year, how many violations we getting?
This is just for the month of July. It was a little more than usual, but we get quite a few violations every year.
You don't have to put that big brass zooker.
She said she's not using them?
Sir?
They said they wasn't using them hookups?
Yes, sir.
They staying in camp and out there? They staying there?
Mm-hmm. Well, I will, I'll get Mr. Gary to run by, or I'm going to Alligator Point. I'll run by, and I'll take pictures, and if they're connected and everything, we do, we can either give it over to our county attorney to, maybe his letter will be more forceful, or we can have the power shut off.
You remember about a year ago, I told you I'd gotten called complaining about that? Right before we get the dead man's curve right there.
And there are several in that area.
Is it time for us to start looking for code enforcement?
Let's say this, Commissioner. I am, we're using that system that the Board allowed us to have a while back, the tracking system. And what we'll do, I would tell you after a year, you know, we will pull a full report from that, present it to the Board, and then I think you can make a better decision at that time.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, the code enforcement, that term, yeah, that's legal after a year.
I believe it's a scary thing, code enforcement, but it honestly takes a lot of load off of your shoulders, having to make decisions for someone to make them, but that's just...
But that was my point. My point was code enforcement means different things to different people.
Yes.
And I would like to see the type of violations we have first, before we consider how we move forward with enforcement.
No, great. That'd be a good idea.
Look, like old Blue, he liked that big bag.
Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Kelly leaves, can I make a statement, please?
Yes, yes.
Concerning number one, that was the email that I think went to all of us with the fore and after pictures of 705 Buck Street, of where they basically extended their property out, put a rock line down and filled it in, and clean-cut the property, just so you know. I still have Ms. Kelly doing research on that property. I can tell you, me for one, a double permit fee doesn't work for me. That's just me talking. I'm not talking for the whole Board. And the 325 Old Ferry Dock Road, this is a gentleman that I met about three months ago. He's mentioning to me about, because he's heard the county talk about code enforcement, where he was at in Georgia, he's talked about actually applying for that position, and now he's stating he's got a permit, but his permit's here in his office. He don't have a permit yet. So he is in violation. There's been some...
What's in the office of the file there?
Yeah, there's been some back and forth on that, but, you know, he called me to make sure I knew yesterday that he does have a permit, and I said, "Where's it at?" He said, "It's at your office." I said, "Sir, you don't have a permit."
No, he don't.
Because it's not in your hands. So anyway, just some comments while we're there.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Yes.
Have you went around Lanark and all those areas like that, on those RVs around there? Because that's where we get a lot of complaints out to the east of Lanark, the Lanark area.
I have not.
You haven't? Well, go out there and see, because I know those people that live out there would be awful happy to see some of that taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That all you have, Ms. Amy?
Yes, sir. That's all I have for today.
But you know what? A lot of that wouldn't happen if they know we're going to do something like, that right now, they know, they try. That's all. You get on them, they're going to come in here and do what you're doing.
Commissioner, this itself is a big concern. This is more than you guys can handle.
Thank you, Ms. Amy.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Marshall. Madam Clerk?
Clerk has not given a report today.
Clerk has no report today. Next on the agenda is Ms. Whitney Barfield, Restore Coordinator Report.
Allen has no report.
Yeah. Allen has no report, Commissioners, today, but there's one thing, I'm going to have to, item number, sorry, that's my report. I would need to update the Board, number six, on Lombardi, what the state calls Waterfront Project. And I know Allen has said this time and time again, and I'm going to repeat it in a different way to get the point across. A lot of people, we have, Commissioners, you guys know, we had a public comment here A lot of people, we, we have, Commissioners, you guys know, we had a public comment here last meeting about where we are with that project, when it's gonna open up. People want to use the park. And I'll repeat, and I say again, unfortunately, days have come where we are no longer the administrators of projects that happen here in the county, the state is. And I guess I could put it this way. Let's say you own a piece of property. You want to build a pole barn on your property, and somebody says, I'll pay for it. I'll build it, but I'll control how it's built, when it's built, and what color it is, and how it works. That's what's happening. And the public, this is more so for the public's, uh, education. We don't have the, the, I don't wanna say the power. We don't have what we used to have before, where we could lean on the contractor.
You don't have the persuasion with this.
Yes, good work, Commissioner. So it's, it's, it's very limited. And I will tell you, you know, I'll stand here and apologize to you. I only get to go by there maybe once a week and check and see where it is. Commissioner Parrish, Chairman, he goes there every day, so there are things he tells me, well, they did this, and they did that. He, he knows what's going on every day, and I apologize. I, I say, I just don't have the time to do that. He does. So he, and, and he meets with them. He calls Whitney and I. He said, look, I, I don't like this. So we, we, you know, we daily call to him. He said, Oskoys, who's the state administrator, running over this project. And it's hard, Commissioner. It's, it's hard, Commissioners, for us to, we try our best to influence, to push them along, to get this project done. We know how important it is, but, you know, our role is limited. And I, I just, I'm trying to find another way of explaining to the public what the problem is here. It's, it's, it's not us. You know, we, we just don't have the persuasion, like you said, Commissioner, like we used to. What Whitney's gonna do, she took some pictures, uh, her and the chairman went to a meeting there on Friday to get an update, and she's gonna stand here and explain to you guys where they are, what they're doing, and I'm sure the chairman himself will have some comments to add. Man?
Can I say something? Well, seeing on that situation, I'm getting more, not for the, I assume, but I'm getting a lot of complaint from the people who take people fishing. And they, because they, they got that, when they got that hose, right up there under the breeze, it don't hold for so many, so. And you get, and then you don't get a spot. You get them wasted and all that. And that, that's why they asking, you know, when it's gonna be done.
Right here is what we seen Friday. There's a lot of lumber stacked out there, so you can't leave the park open at night. A lot of people wanna go out there and go floundering, but they wanna be able to get out when they get home, if it's twelve o'clock at night or two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
But you, you probably got fifty thousand dollars worth of material set in there.
Yeah.
And they just can't leave it open right now with all that material set in there, cause eventually it gets hauled off. Board here and two boards there. Before long, you ain't got the material to do what you're supposed to. That's a truck backed in, putting insulation in the building, up in the roof and all, when they putting roof back on, so they're in there blowing insulation in that particular photo there, which don't allow a truck to go down there and launch a boat.
That's the same thing again?
Yeah, that's, that's the same picture there.
They were pouring concrete right here.
There's a gentleman out there pouring concrete, still doing some stuff there between the restroom and the, uh, building right there, so they got two or three different things going on at one time.
What is it? Are they giving you any time period on it?
October.
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 Now, they're saying that if you come out there and they're there, they will let you launch, but you gotta be out before they close the gate needing. Well, that, that's not gonna work.
They don't, they don't get on that.
This picture here, you can't blow it up anymore, I don't guess, but it shows them.
I have another one closer.
Okay, it, it, it shows them, uh, back then, that right here, the back then there, you can't even get to the boat ramp. You see the gentleman working there, working on that dock, going out there. They gotta finish that up, what comes from the handicap ramp that they pulled right next to that dock. And then they gotta put handrails on that dock. In the meantime, they got a trailer there that they're working out of with the lumber and all. So you, you can see the board across the ramp, so you can't even, if you wanted to launch, you can't launch unless the guys quit working. Well, if they quit working, then it's more time we're gonna be sitting there waiting, so. You know, they are, they are out there working. They had three or four different crews working on different stuff, trying, trying to move forward and trying to get it wrapped up, but, you know, it's just gonna take time. In, in the report, it, it showed how many days they've missed since they started because of rain. It showed how many days they missed when they hit the fuel tank out there and had to stop, did EPA permits, the EP permits, and tried to do something with the old fuel tank, which has made the project run way behind. Uh, that was Friday. They were out there working then, trying to finish that dock up and different things, so I mean, I had her take these, had Whitney take these pictures just to show the public that people are out there working, and they're working in three or four different places at one time, but, you know, it's gonna be nice when we get through with it.
It's gonna be nice.
But they just can't open it up and leave all the materials exposed to, you know, whoever comes by and wants some, grab some, you know? And when you get down to doing your project, you ain't got the material to do it, so.
You know what, though, Chairman? It's a good thing, though, that October, that mean they, they should be able to.
They say in October now. How many more rain days they get, or how many other delays they get, I don't know. But they are working on it.
Have they lost any, uh, have they lost any lumber, anything?
Not yet, because they keep that gate locked.
Okay.
When they leaving, they even, they lock the gate.
Okay.
If they're there, they, they're saying when they get through with this, people can come in and use the ramp, but then you gotta be out before they close the gate on you.
And they're, yeah.
Well, if you're down in the miles fishing, and you don't get back to six o'clock, or your motor tears up, and you're locked in and can't get out. I really don't encourage them to do that. I'd rather have it open to the public. When we open it, open it up to the public, and they don't have those concerns. You don't have to worry about if you come in and they gone, the gate's locked, now you can't go hunt.
Some people go fishing early in the morning, before they get up, before they thaw, and then they, they late.
That's right. So I mean, I don't know how, how it's, he said that if you get locked in, there should be somebody there in the camp or working that would get up and let you out, but I don't know what days they're there and what days are not. I really don't encourage that. But they are working, and, and hopefully the weather permitting, they'll, they'll get through in October, which is another month. Is that correct, Whitney?
That's good.
You have anything you wanted to add to that?
Nope, you covered it all.
Well, I, I had her take these pictures to show the different reasons why, that we just can't open it up, and, and then their report that they gave us Friday, it did list the number of days been lost. Because of these different issues.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, this reminds me of the Island View, uh, property, because we have many delays with it too. When you're dealing with something like this at this magnitude, uh, your, your bad weather days will get you. And, uh, but then look at Island View. I expect it to look the same way out here at Lombardi. It's just gonna be a showcase for the county.
It's gonna be nice.
Yeah.
It's gonna be nice.
So, you know, we're, we're preserving some of that beauty we have in this county. And I, I just wanna add too, while we're talking about Lombardi, I'm venturing to Island View. Um, I want people to realize that this park didn't cost the county nothing over there at Island View. And that from Carabel Beach to Leonard's Landing, we have no other park on the water. And that is what makes Island View so unique right there, just like Lombardi down there. It's part of who we are. I just, I love, I love seeing things like that.
We appreciate you taking care of that board today. This is another, next on the agenda.
By the way, by the way, I didn't make it to that Island View. I seen in the paper we.
It's okay, Mr. Noah.
But my, my dad is in the, there's a known, I had to go check on him sometime, too.
Mr. Noah, let me tell you something. I know your Mark's with us over there. Ain't no doubt in my mind.
Okay, Mr. Marone?
All right, Commissioners. Item number one of my report. Board, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the contract and resolution for the design of the County Road sixty-seven widening and resurfacing project. This is the Florida Department of Transportation Small County Outreach Program, also known as SCOP, project that will cost approximately three hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars. And will begin at State Road thirty, also known as U.S. Highway ninety-eight, and continue approximately six point zero four four miles to Crooked River Bridge, referred to by the state as Cricket Creek Bridge.
Cricket Creek Bridge.
Somebody, please help me with that one. I almost.
It's Crooked River.
Yeah, well, okay.
Really, it's pine log, but, you know, we're not.
The project includes widening, resurfacing, uh, stabilizing the shoulder, culvert extensions, and it'll also include, uh, lane widening and five-foot paved shoulders. Signage and pavement markings will be upgraded or replaced, and they are taking the, uh, the lap sidewalk project into consideration when they're doing this, too.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Or make an observation? Michael, I'm concerned with this, because when we applied for this grant a few years back, it was supposed to take the milling, it was supposed to be milling the asphalt down to where they could put a very strong sub base down there, because over the past years, there's not been any more sub base put in there, you know, lime rock or whatever. The original road had oyster shells on it, but, uh, it has not been done, and that's what one of these, one of the reasons why I wanted to apply for this grant, was for them to take the, the asphalt and mill it off and pack that base down, because the city of Carabel has made a numerous, very numerous, uh, boring, jacking boring of underneath the road, and that's what's wrong with the road. It has caused undermining of the road. So before, I mean, I'll do it contingent to you finding, you know, motion to approve, contingent to you signing out, but get Mark to check that with us, because it needs to have that sub base put back on there, okay?
I will.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, Commissioners, Mr. Carrington received from, uh, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, the agreement for designing improvements to the Old Ferry Dock program. This is a forty thousand, seven hundred ninety, ninety-eight dollar project that will complete the design, engineering, and permitting to widen existing launch ramp, therefore preventing trailers and boats from running off the side of the ramp. Also, reconfiguration of the entrance to the launch basin from East Bay for easier ingress and egress for boaters and improvements against future silt, oh, I said that right, siltation, I know I said that wrong, of the launch basin. Construction will take place under a separate agreement. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on this agreement.
Pleas of the board? We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Number three, at your August seventh regular meeting, the board awarded the Timber Island and Indian Creek Dock Replacement Project to R.J. Gorman Marine Construction. Total cost of that project is ninety thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars, and the, and the dock at each location will be replaced. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the contract.
Same move.
Ready to be signed.
Second.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Moving along, the board awarded the Gulf Shore Boulevard Relocation Project to Haggard Asphalt and Site Work, LLC, at your July seventeenth meeting. This is a FEMA-funded project, PW five ninety-one, the total cost of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents. Project is located along Ballpoint Road on Alligator Point, and consists of approximately nine hundred fifty linear feet of new road construction, and includes pre-removal, earthwork, uh, base, asphalt, and stone water piping. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on that contract.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's the timeline on this, Michael?
That I'll have to double-check which.
Just, just get an answer, ten minutes after a while. Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Staff has received the grant agreement for airport improvement program for the Apalachicola Regional Airport from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. This is a two hundred eight to, two hundred fifty dollar planning grant for the purpose of the required ten-year airport master plan update. It's an FAA and a DOT requirement to get funding. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the grant agreement. Same move.
Second.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm tired of that planning. We need to see some work. That's all they've been doing, planning, planning, planning.
They'll be all here, Commissioner, at your September fourth meeting, first meeting in September, and you can hit them then.
We do have a motion, second on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, we're handling number six, number seven. As the board is aware, finding parking spaces around a courthouse and courthouse annex, especially in days when court is scheduled, is a problem. After discussing this with the clerk over the last few months, I recommend that we pave and stripe the grass area around the old jail. This project would, would add at least ten to fifteen parking spots and create a better traffic path around the building. Sorry to include the sketch. I apologize. Since Robertson Roberts is currently working on the Thirteenth Street project in front of the Chapman Building, I asked Mr. Clay Kennedy of Dewberry to contact them and get a cost of the project. Robertson Roberts submitted a proposal, the total cost of forty thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars to complete this project. And there's available funding in the paving fund. I'm not quite sure if it's repair and maintenance part of that yet, that's why I have to scratch that out. Line item. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the change. It will be change order number five. pave and stripe the area around the old jail to create additional parking spaces for courthouse and courthouse annex parking. I will also ask the road department to put signage, cause sometimes you've got people pulling in boats and trailers and all kinds of stuff around the old jail. You can't get around it. Some people get stuck. It's, it's a mess.
Same move.
We need to do some work there, create some parking.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Yeah, on that, that piece probably on the corner right there, anywhere we can get that for parking. We had old Marina used to be.
Do I go to Evernery Shop, Mr. Noah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know who wants, I can get with you after the meeting. They probably don't want the name called out publicly.
But we need, we gonna need parking, I mean.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, we do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Number eight, at the last meeting, Commissioner Sanders asked Allen to contact Abe Preto about acquiring some land around Leonard's Landing for possible development to assist the Alligator Harbor Agriculture Industry. Allen did contact Abe. The response from the company was that Abe no longer works for the company, and the company no longer owns any of the land around Leonard's Landing. It was all sold as part of that large transaction with Desert Ranch. Does the board want staff to contact the new owners to see if they're interested in, interested in providing some county, accounting some land?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna make a motion that you contact them, and like I said, if you look on the property appraiser's website, you will see it's O'Clonty Timberlands, and they have an agent, a gym something, out there in Utah. So if you will contact them and ask them to see if they could, uh, maybe run it down the pipe to where they can maybe donate some land or work out something for the clambers out there, clambers and the oyster men out there. Okay. I'll make a motion.
All right. We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
We address number nine. Number ten, inform the board that based on your direction to other county departments, I've contracted with Sanovia Solutions to provide core track trace and engine diagnostic software for the administrative and building official vehicles. This software will assist with preventative maintenance, mileage, and other helpful information. Sanovia software offers other features that I might consider adding at a later date. This is the same thing that Fonda has in his vehicles. And I have one more thing to discuss that's not on my agenda, but it's not an action item. Uh, ju, it's more for information. Mister, uh, a while back, if you remember, Mr. Danny Mathis came in front of board and wanted the engineer to look over for flooding in that whole area over there. Uh, we haven't gotten to that yet, Commissioners. I have, engineers doing a world of other things that have priority. So if Mr. Mathis calls the board, I just, you guys can let him know, he's on the list, and as soon as we can, we'll, we'll get to that project. That's it. That's all I have for y'all today.
All right. Anything from the board members, from Mr. Marone?
I got one.
Okay.
Michael.
Ma'am?
Uh, about three meetings ago, I made a motion, and we voted on it, and it passed, uh, to go out on bids for engineering firms. And my explanation was that we need to have multiple firms as a number one. What the, where we at in that process?
Well, because of the last meeting, when we canceled that motion entirely with the, um, it was engineers and that gentleman that wanted to provide insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that motion was to cancel that motion entirely, so.
To go out on bids for engineers?
That's the way I took it.
I didn't think it would, was.
Were they tied together on the same motion, right?
And I apologize if I was wrong. I'm so sorry.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a, okay then, well, let's, let's do, try it again. Then can we do it again?
But, yes, I, I just.
I mean, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was the, the other, to, to get rid of the other, but, but we, I don't.
It was one motion, you had both on the same motion, and so at the last meeting, when Commissioner Lockley said, I'll have to cancel my motion, I took that to mean that you guys.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we go out for bids for engineering services due to the, to the thing that we're, we're going out for transparency throughout the whole county family, and so I'm gonna make a motion that we go out for engineering firms, and at, at, during this time, speak with Mark about what we were talking about, about having multiple engineers to where when you do this C-E-I, C-I-E, or whatever it is that they talk about, that, you know, you can't have the same in-house engineering firm doing the inspection.
Design and the CE.
So that's the reason why I did what I did. It's no reflection on the engineering firm. It's just that we need to have our bases covered. It makes it a lot easier for, for, for the board and for staff. So I'll make it, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second?
Same.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, going of order. Uh, again, going back to the board's new policy. Uh, if you wanna take action on this item today, you would need to first amend your agenda to add this item for discussion. Mr. Chairman, according to the order, again, going back to the board's new policy, if you want to take action on this item today, you would need to first amend your agenda to add this item for discussion, then call for public comment, you've got a motion and a second, but.
I amend the agenda to allow this. I do away with that other motion, and I make a motion to amend the agenda to where we can talk about going out for bids for engineering services, okay, I made a motion for that.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? We do have to call for public comment. Public comment on this particular issue, raise your hand, be recognized, come forward, state your name for the record. There being no public comment?
The motion was to amend the agenda, then, then, did you combine the two motions together, Commissioner Sanders?
No, I read, I sent it the first one, now I'm fixing to do it again.
Yes, ma'am, well, we need to vote on the motion to amend the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Now you can make a motion.
Okay, now I'm gonna make a motion to go out for bids for engineering services.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second?
As recent as dated.
I'm gonna surprise everybody in a second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Sir, if you don't mind, while we're talking about RFQs, just to let you know, the one for the auditors, there was, there was slight delay for different reasons. They took a while to get back the score to us, then we had to coordinate a meeting date, and then there was, there was miscommunication between Attorney Shula and myself about the date. So Whitney and I are working on another date in September, because we have to run a ad in the paper, and, you know, the papers, we have deadlines to meet. So I'll advise you in September, the first meeting, you know, where we are with that. While that you, we are working.
So do, and do those, you know, give the bid up for the engineering stuff so we can go in.
Yes, ma'am.
See what we got there.
The board have anything else for Mr. Morone? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda would be Mr. Michael Shula, County Attorney, report.
Commissioner, my action item this morning is in regard to the litigation between Franklin Boulevard Development versus Franklin County. I see a terrible typo here, this is actually case number two thousand seventeen one eighty-three, not two thousand one hundred and seven, my apologies. This is my desire to receive advice from the board concerning the above litigation, in which the county is a party and which is presently pending the Circuit Court of Franklin County, Florida. As required by Florida Statute Section two eighty-six point oh one one, I am making a request at this public meeting for you to authorize me to schedule an executive session to discuss the above lawsuit. As required by the statute, the subject matter of the meeting shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. If you approve this request, this private session would occur following your September fourth, two thousand eighteen, meeting. And my request for board action is to authorize the executive session pursuant to Florida Statute Section two eighty-six point oh one one, Florida statutes.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed?
I oppose.
Would it reflect, Mr. Sanders, opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, sir, and I just wanted to inform the board that in its most recent communications with me, Franklin's promise is working well to conform and comply with the requirements of the board, and I do not think that litigation or anything else is going to be necessary. I just wanted to report that to you publicly. Does the board want to have any discussion about that, I don't think we need to take any action, but I did want to report that to you.
Yeah, what, can you tell us?
I'm sorry, Mr. Knowles?
Can you talk on it a little bit or something?
They are going to return the funds to the county, they'll be doing that today, is my understanding, before four thirty. And otherwise, I think they are complying with the disclosures, the audit requirement, the transparency. I've met with the county's certified public accountants yesterday, went over the documentation that was provided to the county by Franklin's promise at the August sixteenth meeting. The CPA is satisfied with the information that he has received, it is not necessarily complete, he has informed us there's additional information that he is going to need from Franklin's promise to complete the audit that's been required by the county. But he's confident that he will get that information from them, and so I'm leaving that in his hands, and so unless he notifies me that he's not satisfied, then I am satisfied that Franklin's promise is complying with the audit requirement of the county, and that they are working well with your staff and your attorney now to complete the things that you wanted done, which is return the money, have the audit.
Can I please?
Yes, sir.
We're going to have a replacement, do we got to have a special meeting to get to have a replacement?
As I've discussed with each of you individually yesterday, I have reached out and communicated with Mr. Tim Center, with the Capital Area Agency, I forget the exact name of his entity, but he has indicated a willingness to act as the fiscal agent for the county. That will, in fact, take some board action, if you wanted to take that action today, then you would have to, as we've done a couple times this meeting today, amend the agenda and add that as an item. I don't necessarily think that has to be done today, I mean, we're going to get the money, we can deal with that at the next meeting, but that is board pleasure, if you want to act today, that is the process you would go through, amend the agenda, take that item up for discussion. But I think at first, we should wait and let me finish my communications with Mr. Tim Center. I don't think there's going to be any issues, but he did request, now that I'm sitting here, you know, sort of talking through this, he wants to look at the paperwork for the ESF fifteen function. He says he's never provided that function at any other county, but he's willing to do so for Franklin County. He does want to look at the paperwork, so I would say, let's just push that decision to the next board meeting.
I agree.
And I will have a conversation with him about volunteers as well, I'm not sure exactly what all the resources are that he has, and so that's also another communication that we'll need to have in the future.
Any other comments for the attorney?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the commissioner comment.
Mr. Chairman, I've got an issue that's came before me, and I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to reflect something that has came before us before, and the board had that on it in the past, and that is the traffic counter, the traffic counter down in Alligator Point. And I make a motion that we amend the agenda so I can speak on this subject, please.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders to amend the agenda, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'll get it on there. Go ahead, right here.
Okay, what it is, is I've received an email in fact this morning, and I knew something was going on. Michael, if you don't mind, approach the podium, please, and let me ask you a question. When Mr. McMillan came before the board and requested that traffic counter, it was just to do the traffic on that part of the road that we're talking about. It was not to do the whole entire road, that was my understanding.
I think that's my understanding.
Okay, well, what they've done is they've put it at the beginning of the road, so where you only, you get all the traffic. You get the sun and sands traffic, you get the ballpoint traffic, and also they have installed cameras on it. Now, my people's upset down there about this. They said, they feel like the cameras isn't invasion of the privacy driving down the road. So I'm just telling you, I'm just, we need to clarify this, and we need to clarify this with Mr. McMillan or whoever did it, that that was just to do a traffic count, and not to have the cameras up there either. So my understanding was it was supposed to be about, it wasn't supposed to be the entire length of the road, it's supposed to start X, Y, Z area, and count traffic to where they would know what was going down on the point. So I'm just saying that the people in the sun and sands area are very upset about it. Okay, and we need to do something about it.
We need to call public comment. State your name for the record.
Good morning, Alan Pfeifer with Alligator Point Taxpayer Association. The reason the cameras were added is we've been vandalized three times. There was, this is entirely at the expense of the association. Mr. McMillan, in acting for the association, I believe did state where he was gonna put the cameras. He also talked with county staff about where he was gonna put the cameras. As to the privacy issue, there are multiple hidden cameras all over Alligator Point, put in by the sheriff's office, and also by other individuals at Alligator Point. This is an issue that, you know, without the cameras, we were not able to maintain it. It was disabled the second day that the counter was put up. It was not counting for five days until somebody figured it out that it was disabled. It was then vandalized, restored, it was vandalized again, somebody got cute and actually switched the hoses to try to mess up the counts. And all this is, we're performing essentially a county function, and I would sincerely appreciate if the, if the committee, commission here would allow us to continue to just take the count. We're not violating anybody's privacy, and, but this is the facts that are actually behind the matter. Again, the sheriff is filming, I think, virtually everybody coming on the point at this point with hidden cameras, and he stated so, and his deputies at our meetings. Thank you very much.
What meeting? I'm in a meeting, what kind of meeting y'all?
Alligator Point Saint Teresa Association.
How many members y'all have? How many members?
Oh, two hundred and, two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety members?
How many people stay in Alligator Point?
How many people stay, how many houses are there?
I'm talking about, what the, trying to see what, they said it was a baiting privacy, how many people in Alligator Point?
I'll have to go look at the numbers, Commissioner, I'm not sure. Alligator Point versus, Ballpoint versus Sun and Sands, I'll have to go check for you.
What does it count for? The count that they're taking, what is that for?
Commissioner, I have to go look at my notes, honestly, I wasn't prepared for this, I have to go see what exactly.
I just got it this moment, so.
Yeah, what, no, I understand, Commissioner, what he first indicated, what it was for, where he was gonna put it, I'll check with that and get back to all of it.
Was it for a toll road? Why didn't they do any kind of count down there?
I think the count was to see just how many out there, to see basically if a toll road would be worth it, I think, but I have to go double check.
That's what they said, it was, oh, how many people come here, if they can use a toll road.
But you can't use it in the summer because that's day trippers. That's what I told y'all before, you can't use those numbers, it's day trippers, a lot of day trippers in the summertime down there. You take it in the wintertime, and you will find out who actually lives down there. Take it in the wintertime.
Well, see, Saint Teresa, that's in a different place, right?
Yeah, Saint Teresa.
Commissioners, the reason why we're taking that at the lowest possible portion of the road is that we're looking at two options. We're looking at an MSBU, and we're looking at a toll road, the MSBU.
The MSBU is dead, the MSBU is dead as far as the board was concerned, because I brought that subject up with Alan about the MSBU, and he said it was a dead issue, that's what Alan told me.
Well, and there was some, somebody sent us a letter about Sun and Sands didn't want no part of, they weren't gonna benefit from it.
That's right, that's right.
But we're getting a count, where you're talking about, what you stated earlier was the count seems to turn on the road.
Yeah, that's what they said.
So you're including Ballpoint, you're including Sun and Sands, whatever that is.
That's what I'm saying.
And they said there was no benefit to them, and they didn't want to pay it.
That's right.
That's what I'm trying to find out here now, I mean, you got two hundred, he said you got two hundred some people, I'm trying to find out how many more people who are against it.
Yes.
There's approximately five hundred residences, full and part-time rentals, out at, on the point. We plan to, the association plans to come back before this commission, we have a standing committee that's working on this project sometime in the future, we don't have a date. When we have more statistics, we've had more community involvement, there is absolutely a benefit to everybody on Alligator Point, Ballpoint, increased property values as a result of what we're going to propose, or maybe are gonna propose. But all we're doing is we're leaving out this counter, it's gonna be a year-round counter, we will find out what the numbers are, so far we've been averaging four hundred and ninety vehicles a day, and that, we'll see how that drops off, we haven't had it on a holiday weekend yet. But we're not bothering anybody, we're doing this entirely at our own cost, and we'd appreciate it if the county would just let the experiment go forward until our full association can bring back a proposal, or doesn't bring back a proposal sometime in the future. These are, these two people here are members of that, of that special committee that's working on, you know, what to bring, what to bring to the county in the future. And again, I don't think we're violating anybody's privacy any more than it exists today, we're overt rather than covert like the sheriff's doing.
You bothering people because you, you bothering them people who don't want it.
Pardon me, sir?
You bothering the people don't want it.
We had, we had a meeting at the church, and the majority of people who voted did vote for either an MSBU or a toll road, the majority did. However, the people who didn't vote, we read all the comments, and many people said, I did not have enough information to vote for something, so I voted against it. We have much more information to collect, we will collect that information, and then the president of the Alligator Point Taxpayer Association and the board will make a decision what to bring to the county commission, and you will decide, as is your right and responsibility. But at least allow us to continue to collect information, that costs no one anything. We spent five thousand dollars for a traffic study.
This was just a simple thing that I was bringing up here.
Yes, and I would.
And all the simple thing was, did we approve cameras to be set up with a trip counter, that's all I ask, traffic counter, that's all I ask, and I ask you to find that.
Yeah, and I will, I will.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I could tell you, Commissioner, that the cameras know the exact location, I'll verify for you, and I'll get back to you, probably, I could tell you within an hour after the meeting.
And that's what I'm saying, the Sun and Sands people, the majority of them that live in that neighborhood, off of Magnolia, you know, Maple, Maple Street and all that, they don't want the traffic counter down there around Sun and Sands area, okay? I'm just saying that, and they don't want the camera on, so that's all I'm saying.
Any other commissioner comments? There being no commissioner comments, meeting adjourned.